Welcome, school committee members, members of the administration, guests. The time is 6 o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the November 18th, 2025 School Committee Regular Meeting held at Stoughton Public Schools District Office. We have a quorum present, so let's begin. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Am I safe in assuming that no one from your school is leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
We can.
Usually, there's a flock of kids, and so the kids are leading. I just wanted, I didn't want to assume anything, so please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is named: One Nation, Indivisible, Liberty, Justice for All. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to read the Stoughton School Committee Operating Norms. They are: Agree to Disagree; Assume Positive Intent; Be Outcome-Driven; Be Prepared; Be Respectful; Celebrate Our Wins, the District and Each Other; Challenge the Issue Not the Person; Have Fun; Manage Time Wisely; Put Students First; Resolve the Issues During the Meeting; Speak from One's Own Perspective; and Speak with One Voice. With that, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Do not.
Okay. Since we do not, move right into the Hanson School presentation, and I'd like to give the floor over to Christine Feeney.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. I'm Christine Feeney. I'm the principal of the Hanson.
I'm Bridgette Fabrizio. I'm the math coach at the Hanson.
I'm Lauren Plasko. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at the Hanson.
So when we were asked to present something, we were thinking about what is something we've done that's been successful, and we just brought all the kids for last at the end of the spring, so this is something we worked hard on, and it paid off. So I'm going to kind of give it over to the math people because it's a math initiative. I'm a literacy person, but I fully support all of this work.
I'm going to pass something out.
Something out. So if you are a math teacher, or if you've ever known a math teacher, you might know that one of the biggest struggles is word problems, and how do we help students solve word problems? And this is something they're asked to do from kindergarten all the way through whatever education level they seek. So over the past few years, we have been trying to hone a process with limited success and probably greater frustration. So last year, we were having a meeting about how we, coaches and teachers can collaborate, and Lauren approached me and said, "Can we do some work on this word problem thing?"
Yeah. So I wanted to figure out a way how all students can solve a word problem and break it down, because my students just kept coming up to me like, "I don't get it. I don't get it." So we had talked about how in writing, right, they all, we have one graph organizer we use, so we were using that to make our math graph organizer, which is on the page that you guys have.
And we did a lot of research. New Classroom Instruction That Works is a book study that we're doing in the elementary school. We also have a program called Building Back Fluency that we're using in mostly first grade and third grade, in addition to our Bridges Intervention Program. So we really researched how word problems were being taught across all the tools that we have and resources we have, and what we realized is, it's all the same. What kids really need to do, it's all about comprehension, reading comprehension, and understanding what the story is about, and being able to match those situations with operations. There's only, there's a finite amount of operations they need to do in math, so if they can understand which situations match with which operations, we can start building that. And helping them, also building it visually is very important for them and giving them the tools. So we did try to, we worked with our literacy coaches as well to bring in some of the strategies that they were doing with reading comprehension, so that they would be hearing one voice from all of their teachers and being able to apply the same skills.
So what you have in front of you that Christine just passed out is a sample problem from a fifth-grade MCAS. So if you just want to read that over really quick and just think about it as a fifth-grade student that's looking at this on a test day, and how much anxiety this can cause, and it's a three-part problem, and there's lots going on. So that's just a problem they already had. There's a lot going on in this problem. They don't know what to do. So what we worked on, if you flip to the second page, so we created a four-square.
Which I think, is the PowerPoint in there with our model four-square?
Maybe.
And then in the PowerPoint on the third page is a blank model of the four-square, if you'd also like to look at that. So in, like what we said, there are situations that they're going to have to know. Is it multiplying? Is it adding, subtracting, dividing? So that's what we want the student to do first. They've read the problem, and then they figure out, is it adding to? Is it taking from? Is it putting together equal groups? So that's the first thing they have to figure out in that first square. And then they also write the question down as it is. What are they trying to solve? So they'll fill all that out in the first box. And then the second box, there's a model, and we're using one type of model for any problem. So if you know the total, you're putting that at the top. If you need to find a different part, you're putting that on the other two stacks, and they're labeling everything, so they know what's going on. They've already decided the situation, so say if it's multiplying, like, sorry, this one is multiplying, then they know in their model, they're going to have to find the total. So now they've already got two steps done, and then they can move on to their equation and their actual work on solving it. So they've got their three parts done, and then we go over to our writing, because they have to explain to get all those points on the MCAS. So we've broken it down, and in our model that is on the PowerPoint slides, we tell them they have to TTQA, turn the question around. State what we were looking for, which they already did in the first one. So it's already done for them. They just got to reword it a little bit, write their answer, tell us about the situation, which we already did in the first box, and then just say how you solved it. "I multiplied these numbers." And then restate your answer, so that they're getting those five points. Like I tell my students, they're like, "I don't want to write in math," but you can get these five points if you just follow our four-square. And after doing this, this is a student example, you can see I have for Part A, and then you flip. They can do that. They can write that right in the MCAS, because they already know, oh, it's done. So we initiated this last year, and I had so many students say, "Oh, wait, this isn't that bad. We already did this in our four-square. All I have to do is type it." Yes, that's all you have to do, look back and type it. So this is an example from a former student that did the four-square, and then, so that was Part B. They did the same thing, filled it all out.
Yeah, and if you read it, it's very clear. Yolanda's bus ride is 72 minutes longer than the CD. You have to change your hours to minutes, so they're really explaining what they have to do, and that way, they're understanding it themselves better by being able to explain it and write about it.
And then you can see they did the same thing for Part B, their whole typing explanation. And this person, this student even added more when they were typing than they did in the graph organizer, which is great and what we want to see. So we started implementing this last year. We worked together, and we did it in the spring with my students, and we saw a huge increase in how much they can write on the math open responses. And then we're doing it again this year, and...
What we missed, to talk about, sorry, not to interrupt you, I didn't mean to. We worked really closely together on this, but what, we broke it down into very small steps. So we've been talking a lot at the Hanson School about what is explicit teaching and assuming nothing about what the kids know how to do or what they're coming in with. So we broke it down to the smallest section, looking at problems with no numbers, just figuring out what situations are, then adding in the next step. Then, as we spent a couple weeks breaking it down all the way until they were able to do this, so we saw a lot of value in breaking it down. We call them the breadcrumbs, right? Very small breadcrumbs that they can pick up along the way until they have their loaf.
Yeah, every day when we started this, like, square one was one day. Then we moved on to square two the next day, three and four. So we sat...
We weren't even solving problems.
Yeah, and for math, I teach all in small group centers, so we did it with a group of five kids, which I do every day. I work with like five or six kids. They get to see me at teacher table, where I actually teach them the lesson, and then they move on and do things on their own with independent work, technology, and then games at my rug. So this just mimicked that, too, so we could both work with them and really break down these word problems.
And the cool part about this is now we're able to push it down. So I actually have been working this week with doing this in second grade, so how, with the same thing. They're not multiplying and dividing, but they're still looking at word problems. They still have the same situations, so they're going to be seeing a common language all the way through in their writing piece, and we break it down. So in fifth grade, they're writing three sentences; in fourth and third grade, they're writing two sentences. Hoping we're going to get to one sentence in second grade. Even they don't take an MCAS, but the sooner we start doing this, they can do it, and they don't have to master it, but they're practicing it along the way. And we saw really good results. Do you want to talk about the results? Where's the results?
I think we, our open response questions were 10 points above the state, so average for this past year, and it's a big gain, especially since we really work towards it, right? We have many places to grow, but this is one that we really work towards it, and I do think, in addition, this shows the power of the instructional coaching as well, because it's a close relationship to figure this out, and like a partnership.
Total partnership.
And it's really paying off.
And that fifth grade also had 69% student growth percentage for their MCAS last year, and 62%, it was 62% met or exceeded expectations versus the state 48%. So we felt that not only were they able to succeed at open response, but they were successful at solving problems across the board. So we're pretty excited to see what we can go with it.
And third grade, so they're great. And the other thing is, Lauren teaches everything in small group. She never does a whole class, which I think pays off, and our fifth grade is also in department, so Lauren only teaches STEM, and her counterpart teaches humanities, which I think this model is paying off.
Yeah.
So, okay, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
I know you're very busy tonight, so like, are there any questions?
Any questions about it? No? Yeah.
Just because this is so obviously a product of a coaching cycle...
Can we get him a mic?
Oh, sorry.
This is obviously a product of a coaching cycle, and the committee and the superintendent did support using our Student Opportunity Act funds to move in this direction, completely new to the district. It's a different approach to professional development, where we have coaches work with teachers on a regular basis and an ongoing basis through a cycle, as opposed to like the standalone PD. And I think one of the things that you said, which I think everybody should know, it's not really coaching, it's collaboration and partnership. And could you, could you just talk about that just a little bit about, from the coaching perspective, as opposed to just the result? Because I think, I think it's important for people to understand what we're doing and why, especially when we have such a great example of a success, so the school committee understands really what they're investing in and what the superintendent and the district's investing in, as opposed to just another professional development piece we're doing.
You want me to start?
So, I mean, Bridgette, as our math coach, has been so open to coming into classes and seeing what we need, and when I realized these word problems are a lot, I went right to her, and we broke down these word problems, and we were meeting together on my prep period whenever we had time, and we were meeting after school and really figured out what we could do.
We had shared documents.
We shared documents back and forth, so it was a longer process to work together, but it's just so helpful when you have someone so crap collaborated, working with you, and then coming in and helping you with the students, too, and we were almost co-teaching it and really seeing what worked and what didn't work.
Because we were able to reflect afterwards. I would say the same thing as a coach, working with the teacher who really wants to collaborate and wants to dig into something and solve a problem or figure out a better way to do something, and that was how, I mean, we feel like collaborate well in that way. We actually started with a learning map, something we learned about coaching, you know, really breaking down like, okay, we started with, if we want the kids to be able to do this, what do they have to be able to do first? And we talked to each other and shared back and forth every step of the way, and then I would go in the classroom, they'd be like, "Just let me see." I would say the other part of it is having a teacher who's really willing to continue the work and put the effort in afterwards, so I love that as a coach. As a coach, being able to help and see a problem and collaborate there, but also not telling you what to do.
Yeah, work together.
Or, and also having teachers that are willing to try and go forward and then try it for next year. And then the fourth-grade teachers were like, "All right, we're going to do that next year," because she's been talking about how successful. So it's really trickled down in help with working with coaches in general and not just specifically about this, I think.
Especially where I'm the only math teacher for the fifth grade. It's really helpful to have a coach, so I can bounce ideas off of. Otherwise, I'm kind of just on my own island if I didn't have a coach to help me out with these things, and I probably wouldn't have broken down this unit like this, these word problems. I wouldn't have taken the time unless I didn't have a coach to help me with it.
And I was the fifth-grade math teacher before Lauren came, and I didn't do this when I was a fifth-grade math teacher, because you're too busy doing all the other things and trying to figure it out. So having that time and collaboration is really important, for sure.
Armando?
Yeah.
Mike?
I'm sorry.
Sounds wonderful, and I just have one question. What was the spark? And what was that one thing that said, "We got to do this"?
I think it's the kids coming up being like, "I want them to try to solve it alone," but then they need me holding their hand every, like, they're like, "I don't get this. What does this mean?" And it's like, "Okay, I can't be with you the whole time. I can teach it to you, but I need you to have a strategy to use." And that's when, we were talking about it in one of our teacher meeting after school, who wants to, if we, anybody has a unit they want to break down, I was like, right away. I was like, "This is my unit right now I'm having trouble with, and I really need someone to help me break it down." So it really was the kids not understanding and being able to do it alone. I was like, "Something has to change."
And do you feel this is a model that can be replicated throughout all our schools?
I think it definitely could. Like, we're seeing that it can work in fourth grade, so I think if anybody else wanted to try it, I think it definitely could work.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers?
So, thank you. Do you want to give the chance? So, first of all, kudos to the principal for allowing the space for this kind of thing. I know lots of times there are teachers who really want to dig in deep, and then just they, they get shut down for an overbearing principle. So good on you to give them the space that they needed to do it.
I really support that.
And I'd like to say thank you to you, too, because it's obvious how much you care, and I love that Stoughton has teachers like you that really want to support the students, and Stoughton has a lot of them, you know, but I love to see it in person. It's great to see how excited you guys are. I know that trying to get all students up to proficient reading levels by third grade was something that the...
Because they can't do this if they can't read, right?
There you go. There you go. See, that was, and so I was excited when the superintendent talked about that, and I think it was a statewide thing of trying to get students to reading proficiency by third grade, because if you can't read, you can't do a word math problem. So how does that work? Because I, I know for a fact there are still students out there that aren't reading a third-grade proficiency, and if you have a fourth grader who's only reading at a second grade level, or a third grader, you know, that's only reading a second grade level, then how are they, I don't know how they can even do this, but I'd love to hear at least your thoughts on whether you're working on something. And my second question just would be, do you have any hard data that we could see, that you could give to us on the statistics of how this has progressed and how it's improved?
So this is our second year doing this in fifth grade, because we just started in the spring last year, so definitely, I think, eventually we could get data from years and showing, and then our MCAS data shows it, too, that they've improved. But even like, I've had kids that are lower and just need a little more help with some words, and it's like showing them that the situations for like, if you see times as many, that's multiplication. So knowing that the word, like, starting to teach... So knowing that the word, like, starting to teach times means multiplication and just breaking it down even more, and that's where small group really helps, because I can work with a smaller group of kids and help them more if they're struggling on the reading part of math word problems and showing them certain words that we can pick out.
You also differentiate the problems. So every, as we're learning it, every student isn't getting the exact same problem. We would hope to get them to here, because this is the state test, that every kid is getting the same test. But if there was a student extremely struggling with reading, then that would be, could go from a range of this, these problems are being read to you through like a Google Read and Write, where they could listen to it and break it down. That, where you saw that four square, for struggling students, we give them, instead of just filling it out blank, they can have an organizer with some things filled in for them, so, or sentence frames to, for the writing, to try to scaffold that as they go. But, I mean, we couldn't agree more with literacy is the key to the whole thing, as we started with. And we've seen that with math, you know, a lot, for the younger kids, as a math coach, I hear, well, they can't do the problems because they can't read yet. And I usually say, well, let's use the problem to help them learn how to read, if we're not consistently reading in every subject. So building in that literacy. And we've also been working on building in vocabulary in a stronger way into math as well, because many times we're here, we hear they know how to do the math, but they didn't understand because of the vocabulary. So that's another initiative at our school, working on vocabulary from kindergarten through five, and try to support that proficiency in reading by grade three.
So you know that it's an issue, and you're trying to do something towards resolving it, and you think that this four square is sort of a key towards that?
I think it's one part.
Yeah, I think it's one part.
Because I think what we are all trying to work on in all elementary schools is giving the kids what they need. So if it's, we're obviously tier two, small group instruction, we have the interventionist. So there's so many things going on right now that are trying to really pinpoint getting kids early, right, so that they're successful going forward. And I do, I always say, Lauren, I mean, Lauren, this is only her third year teaching, but I always, I sing her praises, because she, it is amazing to me, her like newness at this is still like so honed in on the individual needs of kids. Yeah, and everything's small group. I'd never, I had never, I was a teacher for a long time. I taught middle school. I had never seen anyone only teach in small group, and she only teaches in small group, which, and like, it's perfectly wrong. You're welcome to visit. It is great. Because I know you have a lot to do, but I'm really, that's, no, I'm very lucky. They're amazing. We're very lucky that they have some stuff.
Yes, I mean, it's certainly an issue. I'm glad to hear that it's, it's something that's on your radar, and you know it's a problem.
And we do work closely with the literacy coaches as well, to try to make sure that all, you know, what we're doing collectively is all towards the same goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a couple of different things, just for the committee's information. Our coaching program, which really got started a little over, I think we're on year three now, if you really think about it, my first year, is implemented in all of our elementary schools. And it's tweaked a little differently from building to building as need, but it really starts with a very key fundamental concept: trust between the two adults working on behalf of the benefit of kids. And so this team, congratulations, that I hear about all the time through Ms. Feeney, is willing to do what you have to do when you do that, which is the egos are left at the door, and it's all about how can we make this lesson better in order for the kids to really get it. And then we can also then look at those kids that aren't getting it right away and say, uh huh, what else do we need to do? So that's part one. Part two really is that it is literacy-driven, right? We're talking math, but it's literacy-driven, because we're utilizing the word problem concept with kids. The third part and the fourth part for me are critical, because over time, if we're going to meet, Ms. Powers, your comment about at grade three, students reading at grade level, we should be able, through this process of the coaching, to really figure out what are those students that really are in need, need beyond, beyond classroom instruction, beyond small group. And that may mean things like extended day programming, all that stuff that we know is part of improving kids who fall behind. But it really starts with these two professionals saying, you know what, we're going to work together to improve our classroom, and we're going to leave those egos at the door and let it happen. We can all go in, Chris goes in, I can go in as a former principal, we can evaluate the, you know what, out of everything. And we can give them these wonderful reports, and we can say this and that, but at the end of the day, it's this development of professionals. This is a professional development process. These two people are working off of each other and strengthening each other and taking opportunities to do better. That's really what it is at the end of the day. And that leads to the outcomes that are supported by, by folks who think it's in the best interest of kids to do so. So I congratulate you folks. I would say to Ms. Powers' comments, there's two things that we have to continue target as we move forward on our data, and that's going to be, how do we see it improve within the cohort? So in other words, you know, when we see these kids doing better in third grade, doing better, we got to, we got to take a look at them. Where are they in fourth grade? Where are they in fifth grade, sixth grade, and so on and so forth, in order to really see the benefit long-term, that coaching and all of that is really beneficial to kids. But, well done.
I absolutely love the teamwork and problem-solving as a learning journey for the two of you, as opposed to this is a problem that has to be fixed. You know, it's obvious that you went through an iterative process and failed forward, as you continued to try, observe, discuss, reflect, and then iterate and that cycle. I think that's phenomenal. I wish that this had been in the elementary schools when my son was there, because this also addresses another challenge, which, which isn't just a literacy or even a math skill problem, but it's the ability to articulate the thought process that goes into solving a problem. My son's classic response to, how did you arrive at this answer, was, I thought a bunch.
Yeah, that's what they want to say.
My brain told me.
I have the answer.
Exactly. And having been an English teacher who geeked out on diagramming sentences, I always thought there should have been a complimentary version for math, specifically to deconstruct word problems, because I feel it's very effective for identifying what part of the sentence, how does that equate into the part of the equation, like you say. So I am taking this home to my math teaching husband's app to see how he might be able to leverage this. I did have one final question, and I, you talked about the overarching success it was with the classroom, but I wondered if, if you saw the same level of success with your English language learners, and if you can kind of describe what that process might have looked like.
Yeah, I had students that really, this really, they couldn't figure out where to start with the word problem at first, and then they got this, and they were like, this makes so much more sense, after we did it for days. And then we kept doing it all together again, and they were like, I get it now. And it felt so good when they wanted to go show, like Ms. Frizio, her, like, can I go show her? I'm like, yes, you can. You can show her all the writing you did. And then they get excited about it, because they're like, I can do this. So it really just like is building confidence too, which I always like, especially because I'm a math person, I'm just like, you don't like math yet. Like, we're going to build that confidence, and I think this is helping build that confidence. Even if we can just get one square done and then take a break because it's overwhelming, we're just building it slowly, and I think that's really important, like, for everybody.
And just to add on to that, for English language learners or children, kids with any kind of learning, or not, or any child, lots of visuals. So all, every square that you see there, there's an individual poster for in the room that's been taught. They have references where to go. They have notebooks where they can reference it to. So there's a lot of reference, I'm repeating myself, reference and visuals for those kids as well.
It's like a legend for a map.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks. I know we went well over time, but we appreciate your-
Thank you.
Do we have our student representative?
I'm quite, yeah, anyways.
Okay. Then we will, with the committee's permission, take the agenda items out of order, and should the student come, give her update at that time. So moving on, I believe Ms. Miller, you are presenting on the Stoughton High School Principal Search.
I am. Good evening, everyone. So we did put out a memorandum to, to you all as a school committee, but this also went out to the Stoughton High School faculty and staff, so they are aware. We've been trying to be very transparent with the community, so that there, we can ease some anxiety and tension as we get through this school year with the changes that are looming ahead. And so we are going to be this week, the week, this week of November 17th, be putting out a job posting and description for the Stoughton High School principal position. Mr. Colantonio has been working tirelessly on that job posting and description, and he and I have sort of talked about it a few times, so that we can get it just right and get it out there on the website to attract the very best candidates that we can for our position here at the high school. We are, we will be posting for a screening and interview committee, so that will be, we will be looking for faculty, staff, community members, students, parents, guardians, who might be interested in participating in that screening and interview committee. The, the weeks of when those interviews will be held, those dates have been set, the week of those interviews has been set, which I'll get to in a moment. So anybody who is interested in participating would need to be available for all of those interviews, so that all candidates are judged equally by the same individuals. And then application and packets will be due in January 5th. That gives our candidates who may be wanting to apply for the job ample time over the holidays to collect their materials and, and be able to submit a complete package to us. Myself and Dr. Baeda and Mr. Colantonio will do an initial screening of those candidates, and then the screening and interview committee will select the candidates who they wish to interview the week of January 12th, and with the interviews happening the week of January 20th. Interviews will take place from like four to seven in the evening. Those candidates, that, that committee will then select a few candidates that they can forward to the superintendent as finalists, and that will happen the week of January 26th, where we will then do some finalist site visits at Stoughton High School. We'll bring the candidates to the high school. Exactly what those, that site visit will look like, will, that will be determined a little bit later, but it'll be meeting the different stakeholders in some kind of opportunity to have sort of what we would first, oppression meets, meet and greets, answering questions, sort of being on the hot seat in front of individuals, and get a feel for what that person is really like in those moments, and whether, and how they feel being in the community, and how they perform in the community. So it'll be a nice opportunity to see them, with the opportunity to announce who the next SHS principal will be by Friday, February 13th. Yes. So that'll give us some time to, you know, bring that person in and spend some time at the high school as their schedule would be, would allow, because I assume that they would also be employed somewhere right now. So they would be able to come in and, and meet and, as they can make that work, so that we can have some transition time in the months of June and July. Of course, I will still be here, and I will still be a resource to them. So we're very excited and looking forward to the process. Thank you.
May I interject? I am new to this school committee meeting.
I'm sorry, we, we have a moment for public comment that's at the beginning of the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, but I didn't realize that, and I'd like to say my piece, because I'm going to have to leave quickly. But my piece is this, and I'd like it to be placed on the record. I don't like where the south school is proposed to be built. Had I had any indication that that school was going to be built on Park Street, on a Main Street, in an area that is robust with traffic, and now we have a fire station in that area or proposed to be in that area, I think it is a disservice to the community. Not only that, I also think that putting it in a public area such as that where everyone can see where that school is, in this day and time, schools need to be secluded. Where it is now in the south school on, I can't think of the name of the street right now, that is a street that is a bit secluded, is kind of away from the public, so to speak. And you have to kind of know that it's there. If we move that school to that area that it is, that is proposed to go, I don't think that, I think it's a safety issue, particularly now with the way the world is going. That's basically what I wanted to say. That's why I came. Also, I don't see where these meetings are being publicized very well. I called this building two or three times to find out when the meeting was happening, and each time I was told, the person is here on Monday, you have to call that person to find out when the meeting is going to happen. When I finally got someone, that individual said to me that, you can go to blah, 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 and this is where it is, it's published all the time. Well, I didn't know that. Had I known that, but I don't think that one individual in this building should only be one person to tell someone that the meeting is going to be on the 18th of November 2025 at 6:00 PM. Anyone that answers the telephone should be able to reiterate, strike that, repeat that information to me quickly, and not ask me to call back continuously. I lead a busy life, just like everyone else does. So that's where I am right now, and I apologize for not speaking at the beginning of this meeting, but I wasn't here at the beginning of this meeting. But I will tell you this, I will make myself available if I am able to, to be at these meetings, because I believe that education is the forefront of everyone's agenda, and we want to give the best quality education that we can give. And I am also a former substitute teacher for the Stoughton Public Schools. So I have had some interactions in this school system. Thank you very much.
We really appreciate your time and your perspective. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to put that on the record today. But, so what I recommend that you do is, our next meeting is December 2nd. It is at 6 o'clock in this location. If you come and sign up for public comment, you have three-
How many sign up?
Just right before the meeting. So like, five minutes, 10 minutes before the meeting.
You can't sign up a week before?
No. That's, that's not the current process.
That's one of the-
We can, we can talk, we can talk offline about that and talk about the process for signing up, but, but people usually come, sign up before, right before public comment. And then that way, your, your, your name, your address, because that's a requirement for public-
I'm a voter, but I appreciate what you're saying, but let me just say that, that does not make sense by the minute before. But, okay, I get what you're saying.
It would then be on the record, and, and we, we want your opinion to be heard and to be on the record. The meeting invitation, or the meeting announcements are made available through the town website. They're also in the newsletter that the superintendent sends out every Friday. He has-
What newsletter does that-
He sends an email newsletter out that-
To who?
If, if you can provide your name and email information, we'll make sure that you get on the newsletter list.
Okay, you said December 2nd?
Yes, at 6 o'clock.
At the same location?
Yes. All right. My apologies, everyone, for breaking protocol for that. So any questions for Ms. Miller regarding the, the search for the high school principal? Yes, Armando?
Question.
Microphone. Thank you.
Here's the superintendent-elect, and we've known this for a long, long time. So I was just wondering, did you get any unsolicited, pick me for the principal? I was wondering, I'm just wondering what the pool looks like, or is it many or just sparse?
I'm very hopeful and excited for the pool. I think we're getting ahead of other communities who will be posting for principal positions. I think there's a lot of positives that are going to attract candidates to this position. Not only do we have a brand-new high school, or relatively brand-new, but you've had steady leadership in that building for 14 years now, which is very enticing to candidates to know that they're coming into some consistency and some stability. And, and so I've, I've heard some, you know, rumors about who may be out there in that candidate pool, but I am really excited. I think we're going to have a great pool.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Have we, I'm, I'm sorry, Jen, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to say that I'm interested in being on the interview committee. I don't know if other people are, but I am interested. It says school committee member, I was hoping maybe it can be me.
Okay. I will keep that in mind. Thank you for raising that hand. Jillian? Jillian?
Have there been any internal candidates that have made their voices known, or any process to screen for anyone internal?
Anyone who's internal that would like to apply would apply, just like anyone else would be. You know, we do work in a high school, it tends to be rumor mill, so there, there's lots of little statements out there about who might be interested, but nobody has officially let me know.
And I had a question, one of the things that I'm always concerned about is equitable hiring practices. Will there be any efforts made to make the application packets blind for the reviewers?
That's a very interesting question, and we have candidates apply through school spring, so in that way, you're limited to the information that school spring and what the candidate applies, or, you know, provides to you on that application process, so a little bit limited there.
Yeah, usually, what would happen is, someone who's not involved in the, in the process, like executive administrator, not administrator, administrative assistant, would go on, collect that information, create a table, assign numbers to names, and then, and then remove any identifying information from it, so it's blind.
It's definitely something we can consider and talk to Mr. Colantonio about.
It's, it's one way to address any potential bias.
Absolutely.
So, just a, just a consideration, and, and I'm out of curiosity, and I know that this is fraught with challenges, but with the meet and greet, is there gonna be any opportunity or any way for students and staff to provide any level of feedback?
I would imagine absolutely.
Okay.
That would be the whole point.
Yeah, the process that I've utilized in the past in searching for principals has always utilized a survey for folks who want to go on there. Also, the timeliness is, we try to video any type of a presentation or a Q and A, and then link that to the families, in other words, so we don't do it necessarily live, because then candidates who go later can actually see, but we would take the candidates and then send out the three links, and say, "Here's a survey, if you have some feedback." Sometimes you do it right at the spot, where you can do an electronic one right on your phone, and people can, on the way out, so I've done both of those, and those are incredibly aha moments in the interview process, the live presentation with candidates, at least in my history that I've seen it be done, so we hope to do some of that.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ms. Miller? Great, thank you so much. MCAS presentation, data, data, and more data. Shame those math teachers aren't here, I was gonna say, they could, they could maybe teach leadership how to turn data back into word problems and stories.
I'm having Ms. McDonough join us, who is our director of data and everything to do with our local data around student performance. I know you received a very large packet, we're not about to go through that packet, and of course, we'll take any feedback about, "Did you like it?", "You didn't like it?", "It was too much?", and so on and so forth, but tonight, we're just co-presenting very briefly on those high-end pieces of information, and so we, you have a handout from today, it's only a few slides, and then you have it, I have it posted, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. McDonough, and then I'll be interjecting at some point towards the end.
Yes, Dr. Baeda gave me the challenge to summarize the 170-odd slides into about 6 to 10. He said, "Keep it short", so I'm gonna try to do that. So, the first slide is about accountability, so the district met 48% of the progress targets, so that means we've made moderate progress towards our goal. And you can see all of our schools made moderate to substantial progress as well. And if we take a look at the next slide, it just shows you the trajectory. So, we are in the moderate to substantial, which means we don't require any assistance or intervention from the state. Chronic attendance, the district actually met the target, which was 14.8%. Chronic attendance improved from the 16.4% in '24, we dropped down to 14.5% chronic attendance, so that's a difference of 1.9%. Four out of our seven schools met or exceeded the target. We have three schools that showed a decline, and that's DAW, Hanson, and South. And Wilkins exceeded its target. If we take a look at the next slide, the district goal, I think Dr. Baeda has shared this in past meetings, is 95%. Last year, we were just under that for our attendance rate, we're at 94.2 overall as a district. Majority of our schools are in the 90 percentile, so 94 to 95%. Jones is an outlier, it's very unique, and I think it has to do with how the program is set up. Last year, they were 88.9% attendance rate. DAW had the highest last year at 95%. OMS had the fewest days on average absent, but at the same time, OMS and the high school have a small pocket of students that are chronically absent, so above 20%, so that's a concern there. And then for our STAR, beginning-of-the-year data shows that in all of the three benchmarks, students are showing tremendous growth, and that's from the fall of '24 to the fall of '25. Typical growth in a school year is 50 SGP, and we're well above that in all groups, we're at 55 to 75 SGP in all groups. Our EL students and our special ed students, however, have low proficiency, so it's something we need to work on as a district in all three areas. The gen ed population is showing 70% proficiency on those assessments, so there is some gaps there that we can work on. And MCAS achievement levels, we're seeing similar trends to the state. The states are a decline in grade 10 performance from the '25 MCAS to '24. We are seeing a similar result. Dr. Baeda and I went to a meeting with the state, and they were saying some of that decline was because of question two, so they're wondering, especially at the grade 10 level. They weren't seeing as much of a decline in grades 3 through 8. So, grade 3 through 8, the change from last year to this year with the state was very little, there was little to no significant change, and we're sort of seeing that here in the district as well. So, grade 10, we had students meeting or exceeding for this year, it was higher than the state, but it was lower than what we had last year at the same time. Grade 4, we are meeting and exceeding across the board in grade 4. Grade 5, we were meeting or exceeding very high rate for math. Grade 3 was right at the state, and then grade 6 and 8 was very flat, very similar to the state. They were at or below the state for math and reading. One interesting find, looking at the item analysis, writing, even though we're at or above the state, there is still room for growth in writing in all three content areas. You can see grade 6, 7, and 8, we're below the state when it comes to writing in ELA and math. And it's interesting, following the grade 5, is that something we can also move up to grade 6 through 8? So, there are definitely some gaps when it comes to writing. Writing makes up 20, almost 25 to 30% of the questions in ELA. For math, 40 to 44% of the questions are written questions, and then for science, it's about 30%. So, it's a huge opportunity for our students to gain points. When I look at individual student scores, some students are just missing the next achievement level by a couple of points, where they could have gotten that point in the writing. So, writing is something we need to work on district-wide. And then, the last slide is the MCAS STAR correlation. So, for the last two years, I've been looking at the end-of-the-year data and MCAS to see if there's a correlation, and there's a very strong correlation from the STAR end-of-the-year assessment to MCAS. The interesting thing is, the two tests are different. Our STAR test does not incorporate any writing questions, it's strictly selective response, so we have to take that into consideration. If we look at the meeting categories, they almost match identical across grade level and across content. The exceeding and partially meeting, we have some students that are moving in and out of those groups, and I think a lot of that has to do with that writing piece from MCAS. So, then the last slide are just a few takeaways, trying to summarize, like I said, the 170-something slides. So, the district has made moderate progress once again towards that accountability meeting, the 48%. We have been very successful in reducing chronic attendance, but we still have work to do. STAR data, once again, is showing strong academic and growth across content and across grade levels. We still have work to do with our subgroups. And then, we are following trends with the state for MCAS. Grade 3 and 5, like I said, are performing at or above the state. Grade secondary level, grades 6 through 8 are performing below the state, and grade 10 is at or above. And once again, writing is a area of growth and concern for grades 3 through 10. And I tried to summarize as much as I could in a very short period of time.
Questions, Armando?
I was just wondering if you had a chance to look at the decline as, as normal variation historically, or is it, does it really stand out for any historic variation in the, in testing?
Oh, the writing, are you talking about writing in particular?
Either one, writing or math.
Writing, we saw, the state has our study applying to from '24 to '25, and I want you to know, last year, they implemented AI grading, which could be a reason why we saw a decline. So, it's something to press and consider. I know that we are using or implementing some AI grading at the elementary level, just to see, is it comparable to what we're experiencing on MCAS?
I see.
Can I, can I interject on this too, because it's really, really important, because we, we didn't really know that AI grading of essays was gonna be something that was gonna be taking place, and so you have to remember that our students on their, when they're typing something in, there's a correction feature, right, that's just part of a computer, right? And, and so, when we had, when we saw our students actually, and we couldn't keep this, which is another problem, but from our teachers to us, when we actually saw drafts written, and then the kids are gonna flip it over, the details and some of that stuff are missing within the transfer, so that's number one. And so, we have some, we have some concerns about all of that, and that's the reason why I think we're trying to spend some time on, what is the right AI to use, and when do we use it, how do we use it, and so on and so forth, which every district is trying to figure out. I know Mr. Ford has a comment as well, I'll come back at that.
So, just to talk about writing, and I can, I'll just talk about elementary. We, we use the units to study for our elementary literacy program, then we supplement in different, several different areas, but, but what they've done over the last few years is, they've actually completely rewrote their curriculum, and last year, we piloted the new writing component, which is now fully implemented this year across the whole elementary school. We did the full pilot piece at the Wilkins, and if you look at those particular writing grades, they're, they're actually spectacular. So, we have high hopes that, that that specific component, as it pushes out, will, will address a lot of the issues we have in the early elementary area in terms of writing, and give us a consistent platform to really look, what are we doing, where are we seeing success, and how potentially are specific student subgroups being affected by the program? But the initial piloting piece, the results, I thought were incredible, and I'm sure Diane can comment on that as well.
Yes, we definitely saw that where it was piloted, students definitely scored. Their meeting or exceeding was at a higher rate than other buildings.
That sounds great, thank you.
Other question? Oh, sorry. Other questions?
Just a couple of comments, if there's no questions. Thank you. So, I think one of the, the reasons why we decided internally to provide the school committee this, and we will also link all of this on our webpage as part of the community letter, my newsletter this week, is, is for us to really take a look at like where we are and where we want to go, and to Jonathan's point, we are piloting things and seeing growth. You saw a presentation today that spoke about that, and so how do you take these best practices, these research-based best practices, and actually implement them across the board, so that you can actually see the growth across, across the board? So, a couple of, what I, I'm gonna call them opportunities, but at the same time fiscal concerns, right? One would be maintaining low-class size at the elementary level as a, as a continued target area. Another one would be to really come out of this and create what I think we should do, which is really take a look at some type of an assessment plan for the district, which we have for the purposes of implementing assessments. We have a very thorough, very robust plan. The question is, how are we using that data as we're coming out of it, so that we can actually see some of the, some of those gaps and achievements. Targeted PD, I mentioned earlier, the presentation you saw earlier today, that is professional development, it's two teachers working off of each other to really take a look at what's in front of them, and what are the needs of the students, and providing that. So, the coaching model has those opportunities. We also have an opportunity, this was one that I've been thinking a lot about, and then was mentioned to me yesterday as well, and so we're, we're years away from what our competency determination is really gonna look like. I want to say that again, we're years, plural, from what the CD is really gonna look like for the Commonwealth in terms of the graduation requirement. At our meeting, we actually heard that more than likely, the actual new graduation requirements from the state, whatever they're going to be, those kids are probably at the, at the mid elementary level right now. We're talking about 33, 34, 35, 30, 33, 30, 32, 33, 35. We're, we're five, six, seven years out. So, we're gonna have this gap in between here, what are we gonna be doing, and we know that, and the, and the commission has not yet released its recommendations, which are gonna go to public a comment for probably a good four to six months before it goes forward. So, we, we do locally have a, an opportunity to really take a look, and I would say, we had an aha moment this summer. We talked to all of our principals about graduation rates, and what my elementary principals told me was, "Well, we really never talk about graduation rates." It was something that's never been placed in front of me, and we did that, and it was a one-hour meeting, it was very brief, it was very quick, because we had so many other things to do, but I really think that we need to continue to do that, to really take a look at our graduation rates, because our churn, as Jonathan reminds me almost daily, in and out of kids, is that when we looked at our graduation rates, we looked at less than 10 students who literally had been with us for the entire 13-year career, or even 12-year first grade, versus the higher number of the students that didn't make it, who actually came to us during this cycle into Stoughton, and then getting into graduation. And so, I've said this publicly a number of times, as many of you know, my daughter was a school choice situation because of a family situation, and when she went to that public school, she was significantly ahead as an entering 6th grader, because at the time, I really believe, and I believe that as a parent, and I know that the data shows us that, and so we have to get back to some of that. And then, lastly, we, we need to do, and this is something that Diane and I are gonna really work on, is, this is now a living document. This data document that you all received, this is now gonna be the heart and soul of discussions we're gonna have locally. It's not just gonna be put away, and, and it's gonna, it's being shared, and so on and so forth, and we really want to take a look at this data, and what is it really showing us about question types and all of that. We also have all of this data that we cannot share with you by teacher, by classroom, by student, by subgroup. So, I am now having meetings, principals can, around how did Mr. Baeda, the 4th-grade teacher, do on MCAS, ELA, and math results with the 20 students that he or she had last year? And can we track that over time, and how are those kids doing now, three years later, that they're at the middle school? And that's how you really find out where some of your holes and your gaps are within teaching and learning. And so, one of the things that should come out of that is, we should create an internal cohort data for every student beginning in 3rd grade, and looking at it through 10th grade. There'll be some aha, aha moments that take place, and that starts with Edge a Climber being accessible to our parents. Having that accessible to our parents is huge. We need to put some, if you will, clear communication to families around that, for those who can and will and are able to, and also provide the professional development if they want to learn more, which we don't do. So, those are some opportunities, and also some concerns, because almost everything I just told you has a dollar sign behind it. Just want to keep that on your radar as we're working to address our, our issues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions? I had two questions or observations. One, to the point that was made earlier, is just, I'm wondering about the district's approach to feedback loops. approach to feedback loops. I think back to the, the anecdote that, that people talk, you know, talking to a janitor who worked at NASA, and they asked him, what do you do? And he said, I work at NASA. What do you do? I put men on the moon. And he, he saw his role as being a role that supported the entire staff, all united in a single goal. And I think about the vision of the graduate, and I don't know how much of that has really translated down. It seems like the elementary schools have been kind of siloed, in a sense, from, from the district. You know, are the principals getting feedback from OMS, for example, that could help inform instruction, instructional practice? Are there things that they're coming into OMS with that the OMS teachers might need to be schooled on, like, like the, the math, you know, organizer, the four-square organizer that you shared? You know, so, so how are we, how are we addressing those, those feedback loops? The other is, you know, in looking at all of this data, and, and someone who enjoys data and dabbles as being a data wonk, it's a lot. And, and so I'm wondering, how might we distill this data to tell a data story at the school level? Because that's what parents are going to care about, in terms of like, what are their real strengths? Where, where, where's the growth really been? And then what are the targeted interventions that they're prioritizing based on the data? You know? And it seems like someone has an answer for me.
So.
I know that he does.
I love all the things you just said. So I'll just hit a few. So you're talking about that feedback loop. We actually restructured our curriculum specialists this year to, to go after the one you just mentioned specifically, which is the elementary component leading into the middle school. So instead of having a separate elementary and secondary component, now we just have a pure continuum from K through eight. Going back to all the data being available, that's, that's the absolute reason why we went to Edge Climber. So we can put it all in one place, and we can cross-correlate everything from, from elementary STAR testing, to MCAS testing, to like the social-emotional testing we just incorporated. And, and going to what Dr. Veda was talking about, that particular platform, we can use to, to open a portal for all the parents to look what their kids have. And then going back to the other component, you were talking about how we can target interventions. In Edge Climber itself, this year, we're piloting intervention plans that are Title One component, our new Title One interventionists are writing and then implementing. And that goes back to the, earlier, when we had an instructional coach here. The way that we've designed the whole program is, we have a literacy specialist in all of our elementary schools, we have two coaches, and we have an intervention spun under Title One. And all these different things are a product of about four or five years of conscious restructuring of the district and what we do, to set up this whole plan, so that we have somebody working for a Tier Two RTI. We have coaches working with teachers to improve instruction. We have that Tier Three RTI through the interventionist. It's all the data's in one place, which is an Edge Climber. The intervention piece, including student individual intervention plans, are then put in that system, they're available to all the teachers. Parents eventually will be able to look back, see what the district is doing. They'll be able to see all the scores our kids have, they'll be able to see the social-emotional component. If they're on intervention plan, they'll be able to see the progress of that plan. So it's kind of amazing how all the different things that were talked about tonight, as things that we should do, or we are actually doing, and there is an end goal in sight. And I, and I just want people to know, it's not a random thing which is taking place. It's actually a longer-term conscious effort to realign what the district does to meet the specific needs of the students in this community. And what we're doing doesn't look like everybody else is doing, it's not something you're seeing in that journal, because it's custom tailored for what Stoughton needs, not just what might look good on paper. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I love that alignment, especially from the elementary up into the secondary level. I think that's, that's really important for that continuity. So that's, that's great. I would, I would go back to the data storytelling. And I, I personally would love to see at the open houses next year, you know, when the principals get up to talk, you know, to, to give that as part of their overview of, this is what we're doing differently this year, and this is why. You know, I, I just, I just think it's really helpful to show that the school is responsive and united in, in a shared goal. And I think it really speaks a lot to the, the intentionality and care that the educators put into the instruction. And just being able to communicate that out to the parents consistently would be, would be great, as I sit here with the superintendent-elect in, at the table.
And one thing that happens is, I do meet on a regular basis with all the principals. We discuss the data. I do share the strengths and areas of concern in each building, so they do hear that, so they have that information, and they also have their historical data. Since I, this is year two in my role, I'm trying to build that historical data as well, so they can see areas of growth or trends that we are looking at. So currently have two years, but I am going back to look at that historical data. So the data stories are coming.
Excellent, excellent. And I love that you are here, and I love that you are in this role. So I keep saying, data, data is the currency, currency of policy right now. So it's, it's really, it's really important. John, you seem to have a final remark.
So I, I just have a hard time walking away from this. There's so many good things to talk about. But also, one of the, one of the, so when Dr. Bietta created this position, he created it so we had a person to work with the principals, work with the superintendent, ensure the fact there's a flow of data. Now, the additional pieces is not only is Diane responsible for the data, but she goes out and meets with data teams, like individual groups of teachers across all the schools, to review their data, and not just say, here's your data, but also, these are some strategies you can use, based on what I'm seeing. She meets with the principals, so that they have the ability to not, to not have to go through and pull all their data and go through the whole process, but to present it and then review it with them. And also in terms of the integration of the data, Diane's role isn't just looking at the data, but she's taken a time, are you a Power School District Administrator user yet, or you took the course?
I took the course, yes.
So, but she's in the process of getting the same Power School certification as Diane Dolan, who's responsible for all of our data. So that not only does she have the capacity to integrate or to, to present the data, but she's also can look at the backend to ensure the fact that all the data is flowing correctly between the different systems aggregating in Edge Climber, and can also reach out to the principals and say, what do you need? Because then I can make it happen on the other side. And if a teacher, you know, a teacher wants something specific, or an intervention team says, we need something specific, or we want to put this other piece in place, we want to pull a new component testing, we can do it. Because not only can she pull the data, but she can also structure the whole backside and ensure the fact that data is flowing correctly, and people are getting what they need in real time. And that's something that we've never had before, so.
Thank you so much for that. Armando?
Just wanted to add something. I know crunching data is a lot of work, takes a great deal of time. I was wondering if you have any thoughts on perhaps utilizing some AI and assistance and picking up stuff that.
I have actually tried that, because someone suggested it, and I discovered that the numbers do not always come out correctly. So it's not reading data tables correctly. So I do, do most of it manually, because I have tried it, and people have, oh, you should try, you know, Gemini, you should try ChatGPT. And I have discovered that there are lots of errors when using numbers in those programs.
Yeah. Personally, I found it helpful when I feed it data findings, whether it's quantitative or qualitative, like a whole bunch, and ask it for themes, you know, things of that nature. So, yeah, but it can't sadly. Yeah, I, I tried. Not yet, I tried to. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate you coming in today. And then finally, FY27 budget process update.
Yeah, so we, the working groups met twice, once kind of like a, just introduction of the information. We are now, as of last night, we, I reset a schedule of all of our team members, so, and I can send this to you, we're writing it for you, but starting next Tuesday, we have elementary principals, secondary principals, EL department, curriculum department, technology and data, and facilities, all presenting and being part of the discussion, to really take a look at accuracy of the budget, needs of the budget, so on and so forth. Wednesday, the third of December, we take the break, December third, we have special education, health services, human services, and the business office. And then December fourth, it's a shorter meeting, because two of us have to be at the NHL, NHS induction at six, but it'll be in my office. And as needed, any callbacks for anybody else who maybe wants to explain something that we didn't understand. And then we'll move on the, a final adoption of the superintendent's recommendation to the full committee, and then have you have that ASAP. You'll probably have it actually by the second, as what I would call a rough draft, because we're still working on it, to see if we're going to make any changes. I, I will tell you what, this time, we're, we're in, if you're utilizing the current number of three-point-ninety percent, and then you're looking at level services, we're about two-point-nine million dollars short of level services. And that's predominantly grounded on a number of things that we'll get some details to you through Jillian's work, and I'll defer Jillian to, to your comments. What we're trying to do is make the budget line items become more, if you will, of a visual, so that anyone at this table or in the public can actually say, oh, I never would have guessed that that pie graph would look like that. Or whatever the case may be. It tells a story, and we want to tell that story. I'll defer to Jillian.
Oh, for the first minute. Yeah, I think, one, I come from like a business, and one thing that, you know, is said a lot, is, you know, you really can't run government like a business, because it just, it's, it doesn't work the same. One thing that I was very surprised on is just how money flows irregularly and not dependably. So it's hard to plan for the future when you don't have consistent revenue that you know. So one thing that I really wanted to do was look at our cost centers, visualize it, so that we can see, these are our cost centers, and, for lack of a better term, revenue, you know, how, what, what money comes in, and kind of compare those two pie charts, and see where those shortfalls are, and see what we have to do to get them to line up.
I love that. Questions?
I'd just like to recommend one thing, consider using the cash flow. Some charts will actually show this is the amount of money you have, and where does it go?
Yes.
And that can really help visualize, is much better than pie charts.
Yes, I, I love that. I was originally planning on doing that when I went to, when Jen and I went to the MASC training, they had some really great pie charts, like, this is something that's easy to view from basic, like, what you described is like the next level to it. I think right now, with the current data we have, something simple. But yes, in the future, absolutely. Exactly. My original thought was how it was supposed to be. But then, as I'm getting into all the different types of numbers and how not dependable it is, it's like hard to be like, okay, how to, how to get it to look right, where a pie chart's kind of simpler.
Sure. Thanks.
Other questions?
One of the next things that will also happen is, my colleague, the superintendent-elect, and I will be sitting down. I noticed last night when we were working on the budget, she had a little green thing going on, tabulations on the side. So I know she has some, some ideas, and we want to make sure that we articulate those ideas as part of the final budget recommendation to the school committee. So I just wanted to make sure that she knew that, too, and that you guys knew that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. Moving on to school committee updates, communications, we have not had any. The Pilgrim Area Collaborative update, you have a summary memo, I'm not going to read it to you. The most important thing is that we are getting some money back. So Heidi is, is explaining the process to me, the, the way they fund collaboratives are simply different than the way school districts are funded. They're funded through kind of a tuition on a per pupil basis, and based on projections. So as we know from here, sometimes you project like for staffing, and then you have a position that perhaps isn't filled immediately, and you end up with a cost savings. So Heidi assures me this is something that happens regularly, and usually the surplus is sent to us, and it's immediate, immediately applied to next year's tuition bill. But there is money coming back to us, and it's a straight percentage based on the amount, I believe, that we send, or the number of students that we send, correct?
Yeah, they, on the back of the machine, they show the, how they divided up. They do that, and they just essentially issue us a credit, that we, next time we have voices, pay the credit.
So, so in case you're wondering why the, the varied amounts, the varied amounts go back to the amount that we send them and the number of students that we send to the collaborative, so. Any questions about the report out for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative? Okay, moving on. Next, we have the MASC 2025 Annual Delegate Convening Update. Jillian, you want to fill us in on what happened?
Yes, so went down to the Cape and for the delegation meeting. So when we were speaking before, there was two main initiatives. There was removing BMI from school testing, and then there was several reactivations of ARI-approved initiatives. And Dr. Bietta was correct, where they did take those several and bundle them into one. It passed unanimously amongst the group, so that, that, so I voted yes for, for that one. For the BMI, it, there was a, a meant, amended version that was proposed to, so removing BMI being regularly tested in schools. However, if a pediatrician with the approval of the parents calls a school nurse and asks to get a BMI, they want to add an amendment that that could be possible. When that came up to vote for the amendment, I voted against it. My main reasoning was, it sounds like an issue between the pediatrician and the family, and I just didn't think that was something that we should be getting involved in. When the vote came, it was, it was split about seventy, thirty, and the seventy were for it. So the amendment, it did get through amended. Then it came up to a vote, and one thing that, and the reason why I'm describing it this way is, this, I think, was the most impactful thing about the entire meeting. It was, people were saying pros and cons about it. It was, they're all pros. Everyone was like, yes, let's get rid of this BMI. It's a waste of our time, there's no follow-up that we do for the kids, it's outdated, everyone's positive. And this one gentleman got up, and he said, I, I want to get rid of BMI, I don't, I don't want it in schools. However, my school committee asked me to vote nay on this, so I'm going to be voting no. And when it came up to do the vote, they said yes to add the amendment, and then it was like, anyone against? It was one person who said no. It was that, it was that one guy. And I thought it was impactful for me to be like, this person came in, he had his own personal feelings and opinions, but his school committee had a, this is what they wanted, so that's what he did. And it was a very sad nay, but he, he voted the way his school committee wanted, so. And that was, that was it.
Excellent. Any questions for Jillian?
I do see like, next year, if, like, either it's me or somebody else to go for like more days, because there was some, when I was just walking around and looking at the different conferences that were there to discuss different issues, like AI was an issue, transportation budgets was an issue, like, I feel like that would be impactful for, for next year, to, for, if not me, then somebody else to do.
Madam Chair, just to you real quickly, it was, some of the breakout sessions were really good this year. I can't necessarily say that of all the years. AI Talk of the Town, Special Education Talk of the Town, and then in the superintendent's breakout, it was nursing and medical support at the school level that was the Talk of the Town, because of some new regulations from the Department of Public Health. So, yeah, it's led to more unfunded mandates that I think we're going to see over the next few years, so just, but yeah, and it was, you know, attendance seems like it was pretty normal. I mean, I can't really project attendance and stuff, but there was some really interesting breakout sessions this year. I attended them and learned, learned a couple of things, believe it or not. But I also, one of the things that I learned, and it's something that I'm now speaking up, is the following issue, and really briefly for the committee. We were a host community for shelter students, and we, we got up to, at one point, a little over a hundred and forty students, if I remember correctly. So over time, those students were put into Chapter Seventy. If you remember, if the students were here, you know, by October first, then we wouldn't be getting, you know, a hundred and five dollars, they would be put into the formula for the, you know, the, the following year, and so on and so forth. So there is a concern that the host community, such as Stoughton, will actually see a decline in enrollment, so therefore causing a situation with Chapter Seventy, which is, its foundation starts with enrollment increases or enrollment. So we made it very clear to folks at the meeting that those communities who were literally told we had to do it, and so on and so forth, that we now shouldn't be held against that in the next formula. I'm not sure that it was heard, but... I'm not sure that it was heard, but we do have the air of the folks at the State House and at the DESI that, you know, this is something that really needs to be looked at because we shouldn't have these communities take the lesser, literally one fiscal year later. So just putting that on the table for you.
Jillian, thank you so much for representing the Stoughton School Committee and for attending. I know that that was a haul.
I stopped the copies on my way, so nice, good card here.
Excellent, excellent. I can tell you where there's a really good pie shop. Ooh! But thank you, and thank you for the recommendation for next year. Something that maybe we can discuss in June when we think about maybe planning out the year. We can think about attending that. And then finally, to round off the Jillian Show, Building Committee Status Report.
Yeah, so I really don't have much updates for the Building Committee. We've had one meeting since my last update. Currently, right now, the big thing that needs to be done before really anything can move forward is the deeds for the new land needs to be put into the MSBA contracts. That's had to go through Town Hall and then go into, sent to the MSBA so that they can get funds rolling, so that we can, you know, get things moving to get reimbursed for that. Other than that, Julie, do you have any adds to that?
Yeah, I would just add that they have site plan approval hearings scheduled at the MSBA for December 18th and January 22nd. And then they submitted their design development to the MSBA about two weeks ago, and they're waiting on their comments on that design development, so.
Is this a show and tell of any sort regarding the building?
Yeah, so they did, the architects and the design team did bring in just some mockups of potential things to look at. I would never have so many Clash and Blues, but that's just me. Those are just kind of like a picture of what different parts of school are going to look like. Oh, another add-on, Julie, because they're going to be adding it to the website, is they have a 3D model. Oh, thank you!
Vandal White.
Yes, so these are different sections of the school, and they're going to get 3D models, it's going to be on the website, where someone can go in, even like on your cell phone, I think they said was the best way, where you can move your cell phone around, look up at the ceiling, you can walk through the school and see where everything is. They can even like go in through this area using the 3D model, which is going to be really cool to get people to see what the new school is going to be like.
And just to Jillian's comment, the colors are not necessarily the colors that are selected. Those are just for the images at this time.
Yeah, just one quick thing. The committee will have to start looking at a process for naming this school because once ground breaks, the beginning of signage starts to take place, especially within the public, on Park Street and all that stuff. So you will be undertaking this after the 1st of the year.
Will this visual be available on the district website for folks who want to see it?
So, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Courtney, who's with DRA, our architect, and I have been exchanging emails, and she's sending these images for us to be able to post.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that will help generate some interest and possibly excitement about the project. Thank you for bringing that in, I didn't know that. Any additional questions or comments, Jillian?
Not necessarily on the Building Committee, but I didn't see it on the agenda. Just for an announcement, just to remind people that the Stoughton High School is having a little shop of horrors this upcoming weekend. So that, you know, if you want tickets, I don't know, Julie, are tickets still available online?
They are available online, and the shows are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
Curious to know which ending they use.
May I add, they're well worth it. They're outstanding performances at the high school, well worth it.
Absolutely, they are. Thank you for that addition. All right, so if there are no further questions or comments regarding the building project update, moving on to financial updates, the warrants?
Yes, included with the package is a list of warrants that were reviewed and approved for the record.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we have a whole bunch of meeting agenda minutes to review and approve. So starting with September 9th, are there any amendments to the September 9th meeting minutes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written? So moved. That was made by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jillian. The motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. Looking at the September 23rd, are there any amendments to the September 23rd meeting minutes? Okay, I had two on page three. Under the DAH PTO update, Hanson Hearts, they just asked that we remove the word hearts. That was a private cheer, but it's confusing to have it there. And then there is a typo underneath, under personnel update. The schools were almost 100% fully staffed. So these are the only two that I had. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
That was made by Armando. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jen. Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. Looking October 14th, any amendments to the October 14th meeting? I had one small typo on page two, at the bottom of the page. Motion made by Dr. Jen Sears to rename the science, just putting the word "to" in just for clarity. Other than that, I had no changes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Jillian. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Armando. Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. Moving on to October 28th, any amendments to the October 28th meeting minutes? All right, hearing none, and I have none. Do I have motion to approve the minutes as written? That was made by Armando. Do I have a second?
Aye, seconded.
I seconded. That is made by Jen. Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. You're tearing through these, all right. And then finally, we have the November 4th meeting minutes, any amendments here? All right, seeing none, I have one, and I wanted to make sure I was correct on this. On the bottom of the page were the MCAS certificates, certificates presented to students in 3rd through 10th grade, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we can just get rid of the 12th grade and make that 10th grade. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? That was made by Armando. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second was made by Jen. Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. The next regular meeting of the School Committee is December 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Stoughton Public Schools District Office. I did want to alert the School Committee members that we are going to be adding a meeting on December 9th. It will be a virtual meeting solely for the purpose of discussing the budget in preparation for the public hearing on the 16th. Yes.
Just want to remind our community and our families, our staff, a great Thanksgiving next week for those who celebrate. I'm going to defer that to you as well.
Totally stole my thunder on that.
Nope, that'll be all yours. And I hope that people can decide to attend the 99th Annual Thanksgiving Football Game between Stoughton and Canton at Stoughton High School this year. So go Knights, and hope to see some of you there. Thank you very much.
Any concerns about the December 9th meeting?
I already had it on my calendar, so.
Oh, well, there we go. Yep, okay.
Why is it virtual only?
Virtual only.
Why?
It's a special meeting solely to discuss the budget.
Still, it makes it so that no public comment can be made.
It's a special meeting, there's no public comment.
I know, that's why I'm saying, why is it special? Why can't they just do it on a regular meeting so that there can be public comment?
It's outside of the calendar, and it's for a specific topic.
We could put it on the calendar. Not that just people can't say anything.
It's a special meeting solely for the budget. They will have an opportunity to weigh in on the budget on the 16th, and they also have an opportunity to come and do public comments on December 2nd. So there are multiple opportunities for the public to express opinions about the budget.
By me.
And then I would like to end, of course, on behalf of the School Committee to wish all of the families, students, staff, a very warm and wonderful Thanksgiving. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn was made by Armando. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jillian. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0.